Good morning, everyone. And welcome to the September BDA Breakfast. We are ready to begin our program. This is our Candidates Forum for Bellevue City Council 2019. I want to start by thanking everyone in attendance this morning. Really appreciate you turning out for this important event. Thanks again to our candidates for all of your hard work on the campaign trail. I know this is a tremendous investment of time and energy and civic commitment. So, thank you again for participating this morning. We are grateful to our BDA Breakfast Series sponsors. I'll read three names and then join me in thanking them. They are Kaiser Permanente, Heritage Bank, and Vulcan Real Estate.[43.01][43.01][applause] The Bellevue Downtown Association is a nonprofit member-powered organization that started in 1974. And leadership is a very interesting and dynamic opportunity for all of us in this room to power a strong downtown. I do want to take a moment to thank and welcome new members to the BDA over the past couple of months. It's my privilege to welcome Ascend Hospitality Group, Bamboo Cafe, Bellevue Christian School, City Opera Ballet, and Aunty Group. Please join me in welcoming them.[83.22][83.22][applause] And behind every strong downtown, there is leadership, and especially leadership from our city. We have a fantastic city government that is run by Brad Miyaki, our city manager. And then would also like to thank Mayor of Bellevue, John Chalmanac, who's joining us It's now my privilege to welcome our moderator for the morning, who will keep us and the candidates on task. A warm and welcome to KUOW's afternoon host. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Kim Malcolm.[127.61][127.61][applause]
Thank you, Patrick, and good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I am the local host of KUOW's All Things Considered. And I want to thank you, Patrick, also for the invitation to moderate this event. Now, we do have a packed program this morning, as you may know. We have limited time, eight special guests. Let me just say upfront that we do want to respect your time and everyone's time. So, I'll be trying to run this as tightly as I can within reason. Now, before I go over the rules, let me introduce our candidates today. Starting with Jennifer Robertson, running for position seven. James Bible, also running for position seven. Janice Zahn, position five. JD Yu for position five. Stephanie Walter for position three. Jeremy Barksdale, position three as well. Holly Zhang, position one. And John Stokes, position one. Your candidates, ladies and gentlemen.[197.01][197.01][applause] Now, the program is divided into three sections. We'll start with opening statements. We'll move on to question and answer session, and then we'll have closing statements. Candidates, as you know, you are limited to one-minute responses. Our timekeeper will show a yellow card. Can you hold that up, Travis, so everyone can see it? When 15 seconds remain, you will receive a red card when it's time to stop. When you see red, please complete your thought. I will not eject you from this soccer match when you see the red card. But I will interrupt if time has run out and the opportunity to complete your thought was extended. If necessary, you may hear the bell.[242.65][242.65][bell ringing] During the question and answer, I have the discretion to ask follow-up questions if I feel more explanation would be helpful. And candidates, please know you're limited to 30-second follow-up responses. One more note. May I ask everyone to quiet or silence your cellphones and devices? Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, the candidates have been introduced. We've gone over the ground rules, so let's get started. We will begin with one-minute opening statements. We will start with John Stokes and work our way down the table. Mr. Stokes, please start us off.
Yes, I'm really glad to be here today. Glad to see you and glad to talk with a lot of friends that I've worked with over the years. I'm really excited about running for a third term on the Bellevue City Council. I could tell you about what I'm doing, but I'd like to do something a little different and tell you about what somebody else thought about it, specifically the Seattle Times and endorsement. They noted my real-world accomplishments and granular policy knowledge of issues confronting Bellevue. They also talked about my methodical approach contributing to Bellevue's steady development during a period of intense commercial and residential growth. In particular, and I'm really proud of this part, is the leadership in Bellevue's affordable housing plan and my support of state law changes to encourage condominium construction. And these promise to improve housing availability in one of the region's most expensive cities to buy a house. And what's exciting about this is that I, this is why I'm running again, because I really want to get these things done, work on these, and continue to build this great city.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. It's such an honor to be here. I'm Holly Zhang. I was born in China. I've been in the U.S. for 17 years. And when I was about 16-years-old, I left the village and I went to Beijing, the big city. And I've been in the U.S. for 17 years. Between my age, 16 and 17-years-old, I was couch-surfing without home. And I, since I've been here, my husband and I own a small business in downtown Bellevue. I've been entrepreneur since 2007. And we have done over 300 fundraising events for hospitals in the last 10 years. And we have given back over $200,000 to, back to the community. And I'm running because our city needs, in our society, needs new energy, new blood, new ideas, and then new solutions. Thank you very much.[420.25][420.25][applause]
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeremy Barksdale. As you know, Bellevue is changing. And as you can imagine, there are people who are excited about the changes, and there are people who are concerned about how the changes might impact their quality of life. I've run this campaign on listening, knocked on thousands of doors across the community. And I believe that we can make the changes work for us if the people impacted are a part of the conversation. As a user experience researcher, my day-to-day job is just that, to listen to users' needs, concerns, their goals, and feed that back into the decision-making process so that we can make a product that works for them. I want to bring that same skill set along with my passion for community and community service experience to the Bellevue City Council so that we can make and keep Bellevue affordable for people across income groups and life stages, so that we can foster a sense of belonging for everyone in our diverse community, and so that we can modernize how we approach the issues and solutions, continually looking for, looking for ways to improve processes and better leverage data and technology in support of whatever community outcome we're trying to achieve. Thanks for having me. I look forward to the discussion today.[482.41][482.41][applause]
Good morning. It's nice to be here. I'm Stephanie Walter. I'm running for Bellevue City Council, position three. I'm running because people deserve to have their voice on the city council. They're looking for a leader with an open mind, a collaborative spirit, and a proven track record of getting mutually beneficial results. My husband and I moved to Bellevue 30 years ago. We raised our family here, and our family enjoyed the best parks, schools, and shopping. But best of all, we enjoyed the best people. In 2012, I advocated with my neighborhood against an unscrupulous practice that was buying up single-family homes and threatening the affordability of my modest, single-family neighborhood. In 2014, oh, I got to get done. I worked on the Planning Commission. I'm endorsed by every planning commissioner with whom I served. I see a future of a strong Bellevue with strong neighborhoods, vibrant businesses, and free-flowing mobility. Running for position number three, I'm Stephanie Walter.
Good morning, everyone. My name is JD Yu. I live in Somerset. I'm married. I have two children. I'm a assistant architect at T-Mobile. I have served at Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network for three years. I have served Somerset Community Association and CRC for three years. I love Bellevue. As an immigrant, I strongly feel that running for city council is an important way to give back and serve. I'm running because of the concern about the direction Bellevue is going and the neighborhoods' voices are not truly heard. I will make a difference. I will make a tough role in the best interests of our neighborhood. I disagree the low-barrier homeless shelter near neighborhood and schools. I will cut wasteful spending and keep our tax low. I will build a disruptive and smart transportation system to improve the traffic congestion and low emission and high efficiency. And all in all, JD Yu is for you.
Bellevue is an amazing city, and I think that we deserve leaders who has a heart for public service and has demonstrated that for many, many years. My name's Janice Zahn. I'm running for reelection. Seems like I was just here, two years ago, talking with you. And I have to tell you that Bellevue continues to grow and emerge as this world-class city. And what we need are people that have both the private experience as well as government experience that brings people together to get things done. Because at the end of the day, what I've learned in the two years on council is this: We get things done through partnerships with other people, whether it's business, it's neighborhoods, it's nonprofits, it's each other. I see John Chalmanac out there. You know, I think a lot about his mantra for us of being seven-strong. So, when you look at our strategies and our plans, it's about how we get things done in the most efficient and effective way in partnership with others. And if you elect me, I will keep doing that.
It was in this room months ago with Christine Gregoire and philanthropists from Microsoft that I heard people discussing affordable housing, talking about homelessness. It was through research that I learned that at least one council member stood against creating a homeless shelter here in Bellevue. And I want to take a moment to thank John Stokes and Janice Zahn for their stances in relation to that. It's in other rooms where I learned a lot about living wages in Bellevue and discussed the need for some sort of change in terms of minimum wage. Other places, I've discussed with groups of people needs in terms of transportation, accessibility for all, transportation that actually has, is healthy to the environment, and actually serves those that are most in need. My name is James Bible. I'm, I'm looking to be a city council member. I've been a city civil rights attorney for quite some time. I've been a leader of major organizations. I've worked with all kinds of folks across this nation to build better days, and I'd like to build a better day in Bellevue.[763.49][763.49][applause]
I'm Jennifer Robertson. I'm very excited to be running for my fourth term on the Bellevue City Council. It has been a real honor to serve as a public official in Bellevue the past 16 years, including the last 10 as a council member. Wow, has Bellevue changed. It has been so wonderful to work with stakeholders and residents, stakeholders like the Bellevue Downtown Association, to create the vision of what Bellevue is becoming and what it is yet to come. In my next four years on the council, I will be continuing to focus on my priority of making sure that everyone who calls Bellevue home has a high quality of life, including making sure that our exciting transformative growth goes where it belongs, like downtown and Belred, so that our neighborhoods and less commercial areas can remain stable. Making sure that our first responders are fully funded so that we have a level of service so that when you call 911 on your worst day, your worst day doesn't become your last day. And also making sure we continue to fund and improve transportation so that we increase mobility for all modes. I'm Jennifer Robertson. I'm looking forward to the discussion today.[834.93][834.93][applause]
Nidits, thank you for your opening statements, and we will move on now to our Q&amp;A session. A friendly reminder, once again, you are limited to one-minute answers. So, first question. Looking inside out, what would you say is your top priority for downtown Bellevue? Then what is your top priority for Bellevue? And what is your top priority for the region? Jeremy Barksdale, let's start with you.
I'd say for downtown Bellevue, I think it's going to be important that we continue to support the vitality of businesses. One of the, one of the priorities that I think is, is going to be important is fostering mom-and-pop shops so that we get more of the unique, we could drive tourism and continue to economic growth in downtown Bellevue. As well as, you know, for, I'd say Bellevue, generally, I'd say making sure that Bellevue is connected in terms of transportation with multimodal and light rail so that people can navigate between areas of Bellevue. And I'd argue that that's probably the case for the region as well, so that people can move and have access to jobs throughout the region as well.
Thank you. Stephanie Walter.
In the downtown, with the expansive growth that we have, I would, I would comment that we need to have ease of mobility through downtown as the construction is happening. We need to have ease of doing business in downtown while the construction is happening. We need to make sure that, that that is effective. Bellevue-wide, we need strong neighborhoods. We need our strong, unique neighborhoods to stay engaged in the community and be able to get to and from the vibrant downtown as well as out of the city altogether. And for that, the region needs to have mobility between cities and around cities. We need to be part of the solution of affordability, transportation, and thriving businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.[962.73][962.73][applause] Moving on now to Janice Zahn.
I would say that for me, both the downtown and in Bellevue, I believe it's livability. And what I mean by that is, a livable city has both growth, it has affordable housing at all different levels, it has transport choices, transportation choices that work for folks. Because what that means is that we're able to attract and retain talent, which then feeds our economic vitality. It makes sure that our neighborhoods stay strong and safe and livable. Because at the end of the day, we all love Bellevue, and we want to stay here. We want to be able to age in place, as well as have it continue to thrive by more people that want to be here. But managing that growth so that we continue to be a livable city where people love to be here matters a lot. And it's going to take all of us coming together to get that done, because no one group can do it alone.
Thank you.[1024.73][1024.73][applause] JD Yu.
For Bellevue downtown, I think very important is to build a very friendly business environment to attract a lot of talents and companies to want to build a business and grow business in this area, because that's the engine to grow Bellevue. And also, the transportation has to be taken into consideration to make sure that business has a smooth mobility and able to get people in and out and to improve the efficiency. For the Bellevue, I think very important is the neighborhood's safety and the quality of life. I want to make sure that Bellevue's neighborhoods, all the neighborhoods' voice will be heard, truly heard, and taken into the consideration in our Bellevue's decision-making process and the transparent process. And for the regional, regional, I think very important is the transportation. I think transportation is a bigger concern in many places. However, this is not a single city's problem. I think it will need a coordination between all the, the cities in the regions to come up with the system, can improve the efficiency.
Thank you. Moving on now to Holly Zhang.
As a small-business owner, my husband and I, we have had a business in Bellevue for over seven years. And I think, you know, having a small business, community, community business, very important because we do employ lots of employees. And I also, you know, support large business as well. As a growth in Bellevue, I think we were facing many challenges, you know, like JD said, transportation is one of the very important complaint I've heard. And solving the transportation issues, I think we probably have to try to solve the public transportation. And the other thing is, I think government transparency is another issue for me, try to find some records of our local government, how they spend our money and the fiscal responsibility. And those are very important for us as a citizen to know. Thank you.
John Stokes.
Well, I think, Bill, hit the button. I think Bellevue is in a great place. I look at it from the standpoint of what we've been doing for the last 20 years, what we've been particularly doing in these last four or five years. We have a, an amazing vision statement for the city council, and we have priorities that we set every year. And we're working with a great community. The real issue is, do we keep this going? How do we keep this going? And I think we have the tools, and it all comes down, and we can talk about what we would like to see, traffic issues and all those. When it comes down to it, what we need is people actually working to resolve those issues. We have the tools. We need people who are willing to work and not talk, but actually act on this. And I've been very proud of what we've done. And I like particularly this juxtaposition of Bellevue going to 600-foot towers and working on building a homeless shelter in right downtown, and a temporary, and then a, a homeless shelter for the future. So, that's Bellevue. We can do it all, and we can do it in the best way, but we have to work hard and have a smart, effective city council.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Bible.
We need a downtown that's livable, that allows for our workers to feel comfortable, that is a place where people enjoy to visit. For all of Bellevue, we need affordability. We need to be in a place where we actually think about human beings first and make sure that our environment is inclusive of all. All voices should be heard. We need to be in a place where we are dedicated to making sure that our senior citizens, those that have earned the right to live in their homes for 30 and 40 years, aren't taxed out of their spaces. And with that, we need to be in a space where regionally, we develop partnerships that deal with and address affordability, address affordable housing, address transportation, address living wages. We can only get through this together, and we should be having a human rights approach to what we do, not just because it's economically efficient, but also because it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Jennifer Robertson.
Thank you. Downtown, we recently did the updated zoning code, which is called Downtown Livability. And we have set the plate for growth that is appropriate and very exciting. And what's so exciting is it's happening faster than we ever could imagine. The Amazon announcement changed things and ramped things up. And one of the things we need to make sure we do with downtown is that we work on mobility while maintaining livability. We are working with our employers. We are looking at transportation. We are trying to make sure we have more transit, light rail coming, so that we can get people in and out, so that livability remains high while people can still get to and from their jobs. For the, for the city as a whole, I want to make sure we have a safe, clean, healthy city with a strong sense of community and inclusivity. For the region, I'm on the Transportation Policy Board, which is the regional policy board for transportation. Transportation and affordable housing are the number-one and number-two issues our region faces because of our economic success. So, we need to keep the economic success going while working to make real solutions for mobility challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our second question now. As we have heard and we know, Bellevue is growing. The housing supply is limited. It's becoming more expensive. How do you plan to respond to this growth and make Bellevue more affordable and accessible for the workforce that supports its economy? And if I may, I would like to start with John Stokes.
I'm really excited to answer that question because that's one of the things that I've worked on, and I believe that the city is focusing in more and more. We, three years ago, adopted an affordable housing strategy, not a plan, stick-on-a-shelf, but a strategy. And we're working with the, the region. I was appointed by the, actually, the mayors of five cities around us to be on the King County Housing, Affordable Housing Task Force. And we have plans in place. We have to execute those, and we have to make them accessible. And that's what we're working on, the homeless issue, which is part of that, because we need to get people out of homelessness into homes. Bellevue has the efficiency and the effectiveness that it can bring forward to make this work. We have plans in place. Again, it gets down to, how do you make those plans into action? And that's what I've been doing and what I think we can, all of us working together to do in the future. It's there, we can do it. Bellevue can do it, but it's absolutely essential that we have the affordable housing. And it's, you know, take us 30 minutes or an hour to talk about what to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes.
The real issue is to make it work.
It is indeed a, a big topic. Moving on now to Holly Zhang.
For affordable housing, when I, when I was out campaigning, I met a 43-years-old woman, and she came to me, she cried. She, she lived, she'd been pushed out from Bellevue. She has a 14-year-old daughter, and she doesn't have a home. And she went to King County Authority, Housing Authority, asking for affordable home. The wait line is three to 10 years. And then Mr. Stokes been working on affordable housing, and where is the affordable housing in this environment? And that some women, the children, they live without homes. And then teenagers, kids, live without homes. And then where are those homes? And then we don't need talkers, we need doers. We need to solve the problem to put people in a house.
Thank you. Stephanie Walter.
Hi. Affordable housing is a real challenge for all of us. We need to expand our housing. We need to expand our workforce housing. So, how do we do that? We need to find any surplus land that can be allocated to it. We need to have our developers take advantage of the multifamily tax exemption. We need to create workforce housing that our workforce wants to live in. I'm proud to say I have the endorsement of the Affordable Housing Council. I had a long conversation with them about conversations that I had had with the types of housing people wanted, where that housing could be located. That was a really long conversation. There's more about my positions on my website, so I appreciate if you look there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jeremy Barksdale.
So, I think some good points have been made earlier or already. I mean, continuing to support the affordable housing strategy that, that John mentioned is definitely part of that. I would also say that having the increasing density around transit stations, so transit-oriented development, is, is a way to provide more affordable housing, as well as make the area more affordable in general, because it provides access to the jobs and then outside of Bellevue. I would also say making sure that we do have that sort of continuum of housing, all the way from, you know, no AMI, you know, experiencing homelessness, all the way up to, I mean, I've even seen data that shows that people earning above 100% AMI are also cost burden. And so, I think it's making sure that we have that continuum, which is one of the things I'm excited about with the, the new site where the shelter is going to go. They have that continuum, as John mentioned, where you can actually go, you know, get through and move out of homelessness on that site alone, and I think we need more of that.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. Jennifer Robertson.
Thank you. You know, I have a, my oldest daughter just graduated college and has moved back to Bellevue. And it's hard to afford to live here when you're a young person, even who has a good job. So, affordable housing is something we've been working on as the council for a long time. Our affordable housing strategy is really great, and it's working. We, our goal is to build 100, or to have 200, 2,500 new housing units in 10 years, and we're actually on track to beat that by 11%. So, what are we doing? We have the multifamily tax exemption that gives people incentive to make affordable units that last for 12 years. We have zoning incentives that create additional density for developers to make affordable units that are required to be last, last for 50 years. We are putting more money in. Since I joined the council, we used to put $500,000 a year into affordable housing. Now, we're putting 1.6 for a million dollars. We have partnerships. Our recent partnership with Sound Transit is going to result in 160 new units at 60% AMI, which is a hard level to reach. So, we are working on this, and it isn't a concern. Thank you.
James Bible.
Yes, our affordable housing plan is currently outdated, and we failed to execute it on multiple levels. What I would point out is that 300 students within the Bellevue School District are currently experiencing homelessness, which means their families are experiencing homelessness. We need to do something about our affordable housing issues, not yesterday, today, right now, with an authentic plan for the future. We need to be in a place where we create mixed-use housing, where we create incentives for those that actually are builders to create affordable housing, where we evaluate rent controls, and where we especially look at children and families and figure out how we can supplement their rent or what they owe in terms of housing so that we can create an environment where none of our students are homeless, where our families feel supported, and where we don't price ourselves out of having high-quality workers here in Bellevue. Because if we don't have affordable housing, they'll simply go elsewhere.
Thank you. JD Yu.
I have read that the city's report that looks like the supply and demand for the affordable housing is a little out of a balance. We have about 17% of the people that are below the 50% of AMI, but we only have a 6% of supply for the house suitable for them. And, but we do have a more in the, between the 50 and 80% But we do have a more in the, between the 50 and 80% of the AMI supply and to the population over there. So I think that overall and also our population increase causing that the demand increase. So we need to increase the supply by, city can regulate, make a regulation change to increase the density and also provide incentive for the developers and streamline the process of permit. And also, transportation is important. I think around the transit stations, we can build more affordable housing and smart transportation system. We build the first and last mile to connect people from the house to that. That's also an important part of the solution.
Thank you. Janice Sun.
I would say it's a multi-pronged approach to address affordable housing. So you've already heard some of the things we're doing locally around our strategic plan. I want to talk a little bit about what I've done from a state level, being on the Association of Washington City's Legislative Committee, where one of the things we're floating in the 2020 Ledge Agenda is to broaden the MFTE, the Multifamily Tax Exemption, to expand it along, beyond the 12 years, looking at increasing the Housing Trust Fund, so that it isn't just our local area and strategies, but it's really finding ways for us to get more funding at the state level, to get things done as well as the tools. And I would say that from an industry standpoint, I think looking at our partners, the Master Builders, Rental Housing Association, looking at how to build more quickly and efficiently with cross-laminated timber. I'm a civil engineer with a background in construction and design. And so I jump in and help figure out what are some other things that we could be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, when it comes to transportation, there are many schools of thought. The city of Bellevue has made progress with a recent levy and other capital investments. Tell us, what is your solution for improving mobility? And I will start with James Bible.
Light rail is certainly an advancement that we absolutely need. We need connections to light rail through other modes of transportation. We need to be in a space where we actually create lanes and spaces for alternative modes of transportation, create carpool incentives so that basically people that are coming down to Bellevue, downtown Bellevue, are in a place where they're carpooling more often. We need to create incentives to businesses and corporations so that we can stagger work and start times for our larger corporations, so that we can handle better the ingress and egress from downtown Bellevue. And we work, need to work with our regional partners, meaning the neighboring cities in relation to ingress and egress in and out of Bellevue. And also, perhaps most importantly, we need to work closely with Metro and make sure that we're actually getting a return for the dollars that we actually put into Metro. That means increased routes, increased accessibility, and increased number of routes. It's a multifaceted issue.
Thank you.
Which takes a number of solutions.
Jennifer Robertson.
Transportation is critical for both quality of life and maintaining our high economic vitality. There are a number of things we are working on for all modes. Number one, the city council has been working to make sure 405 is a first. If 405 has expanded capacity and can move people better, we won't have people cutting through neighborhoods. Number two is working with our transit providers, which we do. We have a transit master plan and we've worked with Sound Transit to have really good light rail, really good transit. Number three is making sure that our roadways, the pavement we have, works better and that we add where needed to make sure that intersections work better and are safer. We're doing all of that, but that's not going to solve it. We need to also work with our employers to get people to switch modes and maybe use more of those connected vehicles and make sure that people can get to and from work safely. One of the things I've been working on, I've been talking to the city manager about, is about bringing back the idea of a downtown Bellevue circulator so that people can park once and still live around downtown. Thank you.
Holly Zhang.
Increase convenience of public transportation and eliminate big buses to smaller buses and go in the neighborhood and pick up some workers in the morning and in the evenings. I think those are probably will solve some of the traffic congestion in downtown Bellevue. And also maybe an increase of bus lines and frequencies. And also, when the, when smaller buses go in the neighborhood, they will pick up, you know, some senior citizens, for example. And because some group of, like a foreign, foreigners and elderly, they are, they don't have a, you know, the, the language scale. And some elderly, they don't have that kind of mobility to, to the buses, to bus stations. I think if we have smaller buses, it'll be easier to take them out.
Thank you. Mr. Stokes.
Yeah, transportation, transportation is an area that Bellevue has been a leader in. And I mean, there are a lot of great ideas. Again, these discussions are helpful to look at what can we do? What do we want to do? But again, we just had a council member meeting last night with Sound Transit and, and WashDOT. And we're talking about the plans going forward. We work really hard on this. And Bellevue is actually a leader in innovation in transportation. We did that on purpose. We have a person in our planning, in our transportation department that works on where are we going in the future? Again, Bellevue has a lot of plans. We worked the region, we worked with the region very well on 405 to get that funded. It comes down to, yes, there are a lot of great ideas, there are things we want to do, but what we need are, is a team working with the city, working with the city staff to make these things happen. There's a lot on the table. It's not something we need to do, to invent. It's something we need to take and move forward and we have the ability to do that. And that's what I'm looking forward to doing for the next four years. Thank you.
Janice Sun.
Transportation choices, I believe, really matters. And this is one where absolutely we need partnerships because when I look at the transportation trips that we have, what I understand is that actually about 15% of those are commute trips. And the rest of the 85% are people driving around Bellevue, dropping their kids off at school, running errands. So how do we connect the people together so we can give them safer streets to be able to, for their kids to walk or bike to school? For commuters to be able to connect and get things done? Densifying around transit? I would say the most exciting part is 2023 because that's when we're going to have light rail. We're going to have Bus Rapid Transit going into Northeast 6. And so how we actually work regionally to make sure that right at Northeast 6, where our transit center is, that, that that hub actually works. Because to me, the, right now, that regional collaboration and making sure that the plans that King County Metro has and Sound Transit works for us is important. Thank you.
Thank you. JDU.
The 405, 405 master plan is very important. That's the backbone of our transportation. However, currently, we are lack of funding because most of the fund, as of now, is going to the Bothell and other sections. So we need people to work on this to get more fund, to get our part done in Bellevue. But building more roads is not sustainable because that's the limited resource. So we have to be smart. So I want to bring the disruptive and smart transportation system that to improve the multi-model for the car driving, car sharing, walking, even biking, and to coordinate together to resolve the problem. I want to introduce that the autonomous vehicle, which is the new technology. We will, we will make sure that, because our neighborhood heavily depending on the personal car. So with the autonomous vehicle, we can connect the neighborhood to the main transport, transit station to resolve the last and first miles, to reduce the car needs for the personal and they can use for other purpose in the weekend, for example.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. Jeremy Barksdale.
All right, so, excuse me. Can you hear me? Okay, so I think going back to the transit or, excuse me, transit oriented development is going to be important, building up the density around the transit station. I think in addition to that, making sure that our bike-ped infrastructure, you know, is well-connected and safe so that people can, you know, overcome the first and last mile challenges. One of the things that I know we're doing as a city is the video analytics using computer vision and machine learning to reduce injuries and fatalities that happen as a result of a collision between a pedestrian and an automobile. Things like that will make it easier and better, more appealing for people to walk and bike and, and get to light rail. And if they're living, living close to light rail, then it makes it even easier. Usually I tell people, I used to live in DC and surprisingly, you know, most people took Metro. And so the more that, we're in that sort of in-between state. But I think continuing to push toward getting light rail, you know, throughout the region will definitely increase mobility.
Thank you. Stephanie Walter.
We need to improve mobility today. We have a lot of plans on the horizon, which is great. We need them because growth is coming, but we have struggles today. We need to challenge our assumptions. We need to do better between cities, within cities, and around cities. We need to sync transportation from Kirkland to Redmond to Bellevue to Renton. That starts with employee work schedules. It starts with the traffic lights. It starts with the willingness of the population to do what works for them in the work schedules. In the long term, we need to expand 405. We need to get vehicles off of our arterials onto 405, get them out of our neighborhoods onto the arterials. People in Bellevue want to go where they want, when they want, and how they want. Unchallenging assumptions, perhaps we could look at something like school buses. Everybody's driving their children to school. Maybe we can have school buses do that again.
Thank you. How do you define Bellevue's identity? This is our next question. How do you define Bellevue's identity? And do you think it'll change in the next 10 years? And I will start with JDU.
Bellevue is a very diversified community. That's the identity. And also the cultural diversification and people's coming from a different place and work here together. I think it's, it's very important. And also sitting in the park, people enjoying, living here, call it as a new home. So I think we can build a very inclusive environment because the diversity is just the character. However, the inclusion is the attitude. We should form that attitude. I think for that, Bellevue is very welcome the world. And this is our strength, many talents coming from the, over the world to contribute to make sure that Bellevue goes the, the right direction. And also, we should encourage the people to more engage and build, just like the reason I am step up to run it is to want to show that this is our home. We should take ownership. We should take a responsibility. Everyone serve and give back and contribute, make Bellevue a better place to live.
Thank you. Janice Sun.
Bellevue's identity is defined by our people. And that is both the folks that came before us as well as as we look forward. Right now in our region, we're working on our Vision 2050. And that also talks about what kind of growth we can expect to see in Bellevue from our region. So as we look at that and the fact that 40% of our folks here are foreign-born, more than half are minorities, how do we actually come together and jointly define what that vision for identity is now and into the future? When I think about our cross-cultural study that we recently did to get a better understanding of who's out there and what, what they want, I think that as leaders, we represent you as a community. And the way that we define identity is by collectively together figuring out what that looks like. So I'm going to say that me alone doesn't have the magic, you know, pixie dust to say that. It's actually all of us coming together. Thank you.
Jennifer Robertson.
Thank you. Bellevue's identity is encompassed in our statement that the council wrote. I co-wrote it with Mayor Choumanak, which is diversity is our strength. Bellevue welcomes the world, diversity is our strength. We've raised the future while respecting our past. And I think that that very well captures our city. We are a changing city. Our, our businesses are changing. We're becoming a much more tech city. We're becoming a much more of a vertical city. And we're becoming a much more diverse city. But our city still has so much in common with whether we have people from across the world or just moving from just across the lake. The people of Bellevue have a lot of common goals, which is a good education for their kids, a safe community, good jobs, and a vibrant economy, and a safe place to live. And that's where we will continue to grow and have in common. No matter how many languages are spoken in Bellevue schools, we all share that common vision and that common goals. And we all share making Bellevue an inclusive and compassionate community as well.
James Bible.
I first came to Bellevue in 1985 as a seventh grader of a single-parent mother who always rented an apartment. Sometimes we had a one-bedroom, sometimes we had a two. I was able to watch Bellevue grow, change, and shift. And what I know is that Bellevue is an innovative town. In our innovation, I think that it's time to be innovative in terms of human rights, affordable housing, livability, and authentic inclusion and diversity. It is not enough to simply be called a diverse town. It is something that we need to do in terms of focusing on actual authentic inclusion and participation. And there's many people that can't find their way into rooms like this because they're busy working 70 or 80 hours to make ends meet. And how do we include them? That involves, and that is related to our actual future and where we'll be. To be an authentic and great town, we need to make sure that all people are included and embrace the idea that all people have the opportunity to achieve and then make it happen, no matter where your starting place is. And that's what I believe Bellevue can be.
Thank you. Jeremy Barksdale.
So I think, I think today, you know, Bellevue's identity is, is sort of centered around the diversity of people, also the amenities within the city, such as the parks and access to, you know, the various lakes and the mountains and so forth. I think over time, as we continue to grow, I think we're also going to see more of a trend toward figuring out what that experience looks like. And, you know, no matter who you are, like, what is that experience as a tourist? What is that experience as a resident? And I think, you know, figuring out how we get people to engage more and, and, you know, really move outside of sort of, you know, their circles and start, in network theory, we call the boundary span, and get people to engage more with people that are different than them. So I think over time, as, you know, we continue to grow and change, we'll start to see more of that take shape.
Stephanie Walter.
Bellevue's identity has changed since I've been here since 1988. The identity, the core is the same. The players are different. It's like raising a child. You don't know what's going to happen. You know it's going to be great. You know that it takes planning and nurturing and inclusion and development. And sometimes there's laughter and sometimes there are tears. This city is great. People come here for a reason and they stay here for a reason. I am thrilled with where our city is today and I am looking forward to where it is tomorrow. I can't even imagine what that looks like. But I know it includes everyone, from babies to senior citizens, from people who've newly arrived to people who were, were born in Overlake Hospital. I think it's a great place. I'm looking forward to it. I just can't say enough about Bellevue. This is an amazing city and our identity is going to be grand.
Thank you. John Stokes.
Yeah, I really appreciate a lot of the comments that have been made already. This is a city on the go. It's a place that, you know, we say this is kind of mundane, but it's a great place to live, work, and play. And what more would you want? Bellevue is, is future, I think, is very, very, I'm very bullish on that. And it is a leader in the region. And I think that's where we're going to go even more. This region is changing quickly. Bellevue is this epicenter of the region. It's as big as and as influential in a lot of ways as Seattle will be more so. And Bellevue in the future will be, again, a great place to live, but it's hard to tell where it's going to go because things do change quickly. Bellevue really is what America can be. And we're showing how it can be done. And that's why it's exciting. We've talked about a lot of good issues here. Everybody's talking about what we can do and then to do. The good news is, we know where we're going and have a plan. We just have to implement it and make it work. And I'm looking forward to doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Holly Zhang.
Bellevue is becoming the heart of our country. And is a leading city, is energetic, is young, exciting. It's also very diverse. And many of my friends who, who are from China come to Bellevue because the quality of the life and the clean air and the environment. And we have beautiful gardens, parks, trees. In the, during my campaign in the last few weeks, I learned there are so many issues about our environment. And the environment, you know, I'm, I'm going to say about our environment is there, we, our city, you know what?
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Zhang.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to the next question. Now, I would like to talk a little bit about leadership principles or actually hear from you about leadership principles. Can you tell us if you have a guiding personal mantra that helps you make tough decisions, a phrase, a touchstone that you go to when you're in tough times and you're trying to find the light that guides you forward? Holly Zhang, we'll start with you.
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. I'm talking about leadership principles. Do you have a guiding personal statement or a phrase, something that you think about when you're working through a tough decision?
In my experience as an entrepreneur, you know, I have faced many challenges, many hard decisions I have to make. You know, come to America from a village to here, to this level, and to here today. I think we have to.
Is there something that you remember or something that you think about when you're faced with a challenge and it helps keep you moving forward?
To me, I think we just have to go do it and find solutions. As a small business owner, I always find solutions, new solutions.
All right, just do it. Thank you. Moving on to John Stokes, please.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I find that the way I work on issues and all is, I think I'm pretty good at looking quickly, figuring out where we're going to go, whether this is a good idea, and explore that. And once I get to that stage, what I want to do is get it done, figure out how to make it work. And oftentimes, on something in particular, when we're talking about things that are really needed and all, when there's issues about where you go low, high, or indifferent, or in the middle, I really kind of like this go-big-or-go-home. You start there and then you can work down from that. But I think that's why Bellevue is where it is now. So basically, I look at, is this something I really like, something that's important? And then how do I make it go? And I stick with that and work with people. And that's a real important part of that is working with everybody else to push it forward. And again, that is basically what I've been doing, and I think it works well.
Thank you. Jeremy Barksdale.
So I would say, for me, it's the people who are impacted by the challenges or problems should be a part of creating the solution. I mean, I try to live that every day in terms of as a user experience researcher and just, you know, it's a big part of my platform because I do think, you know, understanding the narratives and the stories and the experience that the people in our community have is going to be key to making sure that we're actually coming up with solutions that will help them and make a better Bellevue.
Stephanie Walter.
We can do hard things. We've done them in Bellevue. We've overcome a lot of things. We've experienced the joy of many things. In Bellevue, our neighborhoods are our heart. Our parks are our soul, and our businesses are our lifeblood. Bringing all these things together, realizing the importance of each component and how they interact and how they are interdependent is critical. By doing that, we can do hard things.
Thank you. Janet Stone.
I would say as a servant leader, I always seek first to understand so that we can get to why we have the challenges that we do and solving the right problems. Because I think that ultimately, we can take the easy Band-Aid when we have concerns and just put an ointment on something. But it doesn't actually get to the heart of what the issues are, and we could actually make things worse with the unintended consequence. So I think seeking first to understand is always the most important. And when I say that, it means that who do we need to seek in order to understand and making sure that we have broad voices that we're hearing from so that we don't end up with narrow thinking and that we're actually being as broad and open-minded as we can and serving the people. Because ultimately, it is all about the people. We're not robots. And no matter how much AI we have at heart, we're all still people. Thank you.
JDU.
I think leadership, very important, is the vision. As a city's leader, council member, we have to have a great vision to show that where our city is going. And the direction is very important. Otherwise, the more you work on, if the direction is wrong, then your city will become a disaster in the future. And I'm not concerned about the talent. We have a lot of talent. We have very smart people and led by Brad Miyake in the city, the employee and staff work very smart to execute the vision that the council set. I think that's, we have a clear what's the long-term, short-term, and midterm. And when they make the decision, we have the balance or the benefit. I think very important, we have to keep in mind who we represent. We represent our citizens, our residents here. We have to behave in the best interest of our residents here.
Thank you. James Bible.
Authentically do what you believe is right, and don't be afraid to face the fire. I learned this from my grandfather, who had a cross burned on his front yard in the Pacific Northwest for who he chose to marry and the stances that he chose to take. He taught me this when I was a 17-year-old freshman and I stood up against some college students in relation to a hazing incident involving another young man and got ridiculed for it and was ready to go home. And when I was talking to him about why I needed a bus ticket and why it was time to quit it all and find another school, he said, "I'm really proud of you, but I need you to face the fire because if you don't face the fire, they will just say that you ran, and there will be no change." So we have to do what we authentically believe is right based on analysis. And sometimes that's going to be uncomfortable for folks, but you have to face the fire.
Thank you. Jennifer Robertson.
I also subscribe to the go-big-or-go-home in Bellevue. It's something that my colleague John and I have said many times on the council over the years, and saying that bold vision. But then we're always willing to do the work to make that vision come true. But my real touchstone is when I'm faced with a hard decision, I think long and hard about what way I should go, which way makes the quality of life better for the people who live here. And when I talk about quality of life, I'm not just talking about safety and parks. I'm also talking about having good jobs, being able to get home to their kids, being able to afford to live here. So making sure that the quality of life for everyone who calls Bellevue home has been my touchstone and my greatest priority as a council member for the last 10 years, and it will continue to guide my work in this city, as will dreaming big dreams and doing the hard work to make them a reality.
Thank you all. And candidates, we are heading into the homestretch. We are now going to hear the last question, a two-parter. First, do you feel downtown Bellevue is headed in the right direction or in the wrong direction? And then, in your view, what is the greatest opportunity for downtown as the city plans for its future? Jennifer Robertson.
Thank you. Well, this is very exciting. I think downtown is definitely headed in the right direction. It is starting to build out in the way that we've envisioned. You know, for the last 16 years, I've been making land use policy for this city, and it has been so exciting to see these dreams that we've dreamed start to go vertical and become reality. But it's not without its challenges. It's been an unabashed success, which is why the growth is happening faster than we expected. So we need to make sure that we stay ahead of that growth with additional resources for transportation, for making sure that we have livable space with regards to parks, with regard to connectivity, getting people in and out, and making sure downtown remains to be a safe place. I don't want anyone to be afraid to walk out at night in fear of their lives. Also, Light Rail is very exciting. That's going to be opening downtown in 2023. That's going to change. It's already changing things, and that's one of the greatest opportunities. And I'm so proud of the work that we did as a council to make sure Light Rail was sited right so that it can get people where they need to get quickly and efficiently.
Thank you. James Bible.
Bellevue is certainly headed in a positive direction downtown, and I want to say that I appreciate Janice Sun and John Stokes in relation to their move in terms of pushing for Light Rail and other things that some council members were actually fighting against. In relation to downtown and how downtown Bellevue can improve, we need to continue to do what we can to make it more accessible to all people. We need to be in a space where not only do we support Light Rail, but we also support alternative modes of transportation that allow for folks to easily access downtown Bellevue. We need to continue to make it livable. We need to protect our parks that are here in downtown Bellevue. We need to create and continue to create events that actually draw people to some of our parks in Bellevue as well, whether it be movies during the summer, whether it be other community and family events. We need to support our community centers and our boys and girls clubs that are located relatively close to downtown as well. We need to make it safe for all folks, inclusive for all people, in a place where everybody enjoys to live, work, and play.
Thank you. JDU.
Bellevue is a great city. But recently, I heard a lot of concern from the neighborhoods about their inputs in the city's decision got lost. For example, in the low-barrier homeless shelter issue and energy side issues, many people's input were not taken into the consideration. And also, look at the transportation in Bellevue downtown. It's become worse, which we have to work very hard on to get them improved. We have to have a disruptive and smarter solution to make it work, not only for the people living here, but also the people coming from other cities. Because when people think about the Bellevue, they probably don't have a picture about our different neighborhood. They all think, oh, Bellevue downtown, that's the symbol of the Bellevue. So we have to make sure the Bellevue is a friendly and walkable, livable city, and people enjoy and safe is very important for downtown.
Thank you. Janice Sun.
Absolutely. Bellevue downtown is moving in the right direction. It's exciting times. We have 14,000 residents that live in downtown, 60,000 jobs, and more coming. We're going to have 600-foot towers in downtown. And so to me, we're absolutely moving in the right direction about continuing to have a downtown that's thriving, where people can live and work in the same place. There are places for them to eat and build community in a different way than for those that want to live in the areas outside of downtown. I would say that some things we need to focus on, though, is how do we partner with Amazon as they're coming so that as the workers are here, how do they get into downtown? What are the living choices that they want to make? I understand they also have a lot of dogs. So are there amenities for the folks that are going to be working there with their furry pets? And I also believe we need to work on curb management and making sure that the transportation is working because that's going to be our bottleneck.
Thank you. Stephanie Walter.
I'm pleased to say at the Bellevue Downtown Association that I think Bellevue is going in the right direction. I had a little piece in that as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. We worked on downtown livability where we made the hard decisions. We decided to go up and not out into neighborhoods. We decided to go vertical. I sat with people who wanted to build the bigger buildings, and I sat with people from neighborhoods. And I listened to the concerns from each side, and we created a mutually beneficial result. I actually got an endorsement letter to the Bellevue Reporter from someone from Northtown because she appreciated, while she didn't get everything she wanted, she knew she was heard. And I think that's why the downtown is going to be successful. We have people there who are the newest growing neighborhood in downtown. It's incredibly exciting. I look forward to retiring there myself. It's an exciting time, and we're going in the right direction. We just need to have mobility to do it.
Thank you. Jeremy Barksdale.
So I do think downtown is headed in the right direction. I mean, it has a recipe for really creating a thriving environment with transportation and the businesses that are coming in. I do think there's an opportunity to make it easier for people to walk around downtown so that people are more likely to, you know, navigate and get around and get out of the cars so that they can engage with each other, right? And so we can create a more inclusive community.
Thank you. John Stokes.
Yeah, I definitely think that downtown is going in the right direction. I think we all agree on that. It's just amazing how much it's changed in the last five years. One of the things that we're working on and I think we can improve on is arts and culture. I've been working on the Performing Arts Center East for a long time. We were going to get there. We're doing a lot more, and that's something we're attracting into Bellevue. But where Bellevue is going to be in the future in downtown, I think it's going to be the epicenter for more than just this part of the east side, but for the whole east side of the county and larger. It is growing amazingly, and we have the capacity to do that, and I think we know how to keep it going. And the beauty of it is we can have a downtown neighborhood, which is our biggest neighborhood, and we can have great neighborhoods outside of downtown. And I think that's the balance we have to work on. I'm really excited about what BDA has been doing. I've gone on all the trips, and we learn, and we come back, and we apply it. And I think that's part of what makes Bellevue great, is having Bellevue Downtown Association and the people here working together to feed into the city.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. And Holly Zhang.
I was born in a village, and I went to Beijing. Beijing is a big city. And when I moved here, moved to Bellevue, I just realized I love the city very much. That's why I put my business in downtown Bellevue here. And Bellevue definitely in the right direction. But because of our growth, we're facing many issues here. The quality of life. And like I had a meeting with PACE, downtown Bellevue, we're going to build this art center. It's a great for our city, get our community together, and it's an addition for our quality of life for City Bellevue. And then also, there are another issue. We have a property tax pretty high, and then there are seniors. People live here for their whole lives, being pushed out. So those issues, we have to make sure we solve and keep our seniors here. And also make sure our physical responsibility, not waste money, use our money wisely, effectively.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to the end here. I want to thank all the candidates. Thank you for your time and for your attention. Folks, this forum will be available on Bellevue TV. And that concludes our program. Oh! Yeah, thank you.
Encore.
Well, should we have closing statements?
Would everyone like to hear closing statements? 30 seconds? Okay, let's do it.
Boom, and we've got the bell to help us out. All right. I will start the other end of the table, please, Mr. Stokes. Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Let's start with you, Jennifer.
It's been my honor to serve as your voice on the Bellevue City Council these past 10 years. For those that don't know me, my day job is as a municipal and land use attorney, and I have a long record of active services to the Bellevue community. I'd like to highlight two endorsements. First is the East Side Business Alliance, which is part of the Bellevue Chamber. And the other is the Seattle Times, which writes, "Bellevue has been a pivotal figure in guiding the city since 2009 and has been instrumental in housing development plans and the city's long-awaited connection to soundtransit Light Rail. Bellevue is moving in the right direction as a growing and livable city, and Robertson has shown remarkable aptitude in helping shape the decisions that reverberate for decades." I'm Jennifer Robertson. I'm running for Bellevue City Council. I ask for your vote. If you want to learn more about me, go to robertsonforcouncil.com. Also, for those that want to support my campaign, I'm having my fall kickoff tonight next door at the Bellevue Hilton at 5:30. Come on down and join the team. Thank you.
Mr. Bible.
At the last candidate's forum, my opponent said that this wasn't a time for on-the-job training, and I didn't get a chance to respond to that. So I want to tell you a little bit about who I am. When I was in college, eight of my brothers and sisters were experiencing homelessness with my father, and people told me that it wouldn't be a good time for me to finish. I should take a break, but I graduated. When I was in law school, I was a foster parent, and people said, "Oh, that might not be possible." But I graduated with honors. After law school, I went and worked as a public defender, and people said the caseloads were too high. How could you do it? And then I became the president of the NAACP and was the head of 22 executive committees and now have been an attorney for 17 years. I am dedicated to doing what's right. I'm dedicated to doing what's best for all. I'm dedicated to the Constitution. I'm dedicated to those that often do not have their voices heard in this room. We can't ignore that there are 300 homeless students in Bellevue public schools. We can't ignore that there are people experiencing homelessness here. We can't ignore that there are people that are in a place where even though they're working 50 or 60 hours a week, they can't afford to stay in the homes that they're living in.
Thank you. Janice Sun. Janice Sun.
Two years ago, I ran as a bridge builder. That's been a bridge to action, a bridge to bring people together, a bridge to find common ground, solve problems together. And I would say that the proudest thing is, is earning the endorsement of the East Side Business Alliance because didn't have that two years ago. But what I believe is that what I've shown in my two years on council is my ability to be out in community, listen, understand the issues, be out in the business community, understand your issues, coming together and solving problems together. Because at the end of the day, with Amazon coming and over a billion-dollar biennial budget, experience matters. And what we need are leaders at the helm that actually have both private business as well as public agency experience. I'm an engineer with a heart for public service and I'm all in for the community. So, thank you.
I don't take this election very lightly. I have done many, many doorbells and I have a deep faith in the people of Bellevue. I will remember that I represent the community in which I live, work, and raise my childrens. For the Bellevue downtown, I really want to see that more prosperity. I want to see people able to walk in the night, in the street and feel safe. And I'm not a typical politician. English is my second language and I don't know how to use a fancy word, but what you see is what you get. I am an engineer. I'm trained to be able to tell something is broken or about to break. And I have solutions. You can count on me. I will make a difference. I'm very grateful to have this opportunity to share with you and I appreciate your vote.
Hi, I am, I doorbell thousands of doors and what I learned at the doors is people are looking for council members who respect their past, engage in their present, and transparently plan the future. We haven't heard a lot about transparency, but I think it's really important. I think the people of Bellevue want to engage in and with their city leadership. They want to help form the direction that the city goes. I will listen. I am of those neighborhoods. I came to downtown and worked on the Planning Commission and learned so much about land use, but it really all comes back to the people who live in Bellevue. That's who it's about. I'm Stephanie Walter. I'm running for Bellevue City Council, position three. To learn more, you can look at my website, stephanieforbellevue.com. I have a fire in my belly for this city and I will work hard for you. I will listen first, I will collaborate with colleagues, and then I will form positions. Thank you.
So as we, as we grow and change, the, the issues will continue today, tomorrow, and they will evolve and, and, you know, we'll have to work together. And I'm really passionate about community and collaborating and working with you and the rest of the community. And that's what I commit to doing. I'm Jeremy Barksdale, candidate for Bellevue City Council, position three, and I ask for your vote.
As a new candidate, I learned so much during this campaign. And I think in our society, we have changed so much and we need new, new blood, new ideas and new solutions. And in the last forum, my opponent, Mr. Stokes, said, "We don't need new people for new ideas." But I think we do. We do need new ideas and new solutions. And I didn't have any endorsements, big, long-term, long-term politicians to endorse me, but I'm asking you to endorse me. Thank you very much.
Well, I think it's a really exciting time. I really appreciated the support and working with people over these last eight years and I want to continue doing that. But I want to continue doing that not because I'm settled into it. I never said what she said. I'm sorry if she misinterpreted. I would never say that. We have two, we have other people coming in and we, it's, it's important to have all people. And diversity means everybody from people like me to people like Holly. So diversity is not just one thing. And new ideas is great. In fact, I'm very proud of the fact that the King County Young Democrats endorsed me. And I think that's, that shows some things. I was also endorsed by the Sierra Club, the East Side Business Association, the Affordable Housing Council of the, what am I trying to say? The Master Builders and Fuse. I work across lines and I work together and I look forward to another four years of continuing to make this a great city and do what I do best, working with everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Well, thank you all to our candidates. I'm glad we got those closing statements in. And again, thank you, everyone, for your kind attention. This will now, actually, conclude our morning. Statements, Bellevue TV will have this available for you later. Thank you.
And if you could, join me in thanking Kim Malcolm, our moderator. You can, I encourage you to tune in and listen to Kim on the after, in the afternoons on KUOW. You'll hear her. She's a fantastic storyteller. Thanks again to the candidates, our breakfast series sponsors, Vulcan Real Estate, Kaiser Permanente, and Heritage Bank. Thanks to you all for your leadership. As you can tell, we have many things in our community that give us a competitive edge. I would say what gives us the community edge is our willingness to work together collaboratively to solve problems in our community. And city council's a big, big part of that. So thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Bye.